I guess whatever.
He's our guest.
Is that official, Randy? You know, I do not know. Did you have this?
Okay, we're on. Call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Had the board had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting.
I have moved to accept this printed.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
They are approved. We're going to take the first order of business, the issue of triple E and the sad passing and the moment of silence for our dear friend and neighbor, Marty Newfield. Thank you. We have with us tonight Alan Perry, the town's health agent, Wayne Andrews, superintendent of Bristol mosquito control, and for other questions later on, we have the chairman of the BR school committee, Pat Riley. Alan, if you'd like to lead us off, please, we'd appreciate that. And just to any speakers tonight, you'll be recognized, we'll give you as much time as necessary, but when you approach the podium, please issue your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, I know that you have an understanding of the history of what brought us to this meeting tonight. If you don't mind, I'd like to fill in everyone tonight. I know the board knows as well, the board brings us this particular process this season that brought us to tonight's meeting.
Sure.
As you're aware, every year in the town of Rehnham, we go through this issue of potential risk for our HOM, triple E, and the mosquitoes that carry the virus. The town of Rehnham always considers itself at high risk for triple E for the traction of the virus. This is something that is endemic in the community and also in the region. So we do always consider ourselves to be at a high risk. But what happened this year officially, on August 1st, the State Department of Public Health notified our office of a first result of a triple E carried mosquito. Again, this was August 1st. This was a culiseta melanura type of mosquito, which is typically a bird biting type of mosquito. And I don't want to go into too much detail if there are any questions regarding what mosquitoes do and what type of mosquitoes do what. We do have, as you've mentioned, Mr. Andrews here tonight from the superintendent of the Bristol County Mosquito Control. We also have Priscilla Matting here tonight, this young lady sitting next to me in the blue. She's an entomologist with the Bristol County Mosquito Control. And I think if you do have any specific questions regarding entomology, those folks will be able to assist you with that. Okay. So on August 1st, we were notified of this, and it wasn't a bird biting type of mosquito. And at that particular time, I think the State Department of Public Health issued a warning that we were maybe at a low or to moderate risk. But again, in the town of Rehnham, we consider ourselves every year at a high risk, and we operate that way. I spoke with the director of the Rehnham Park and Recreation Department and the chairman at the time. Yeah, I'm noticing an echo as well.
Yeah, we're getting an echo.
I spoke with the chairman, excuse me, the chairman of the board at that time, and also with the director of the Park and Recreation Department. And collectively, we agreed that we needed to take an action. At that particular time, it was recommended that the activities on town, recommended from the Board of Health, that all activities on town-owned property would cease half an hour prior to sunset and half an hour after sunrise. And again, this was a recommendation at that particular time. Fortunately, we have a very good relationship in this community between the Board of Health and the Park and Recreation Department. And they went, they immediately went into a mode of notifying all of the leagues, the representatives of the leagues, and representatives of other entities that may be using the town property, that they were to go to that restriction, that they were to cease activity on town-owned lands half an hour prior to dusk. That was issued on August 8th through the Park and Recreation Department. On August 15th, the town of Rehnham was notified by the State Department of Public Health that there was a mosquito positive finding in a mosquito that was typically a human-type bite. And apparently, and again, I'll defer to the experts who are here tonight, but apparently that is a mosquito that is a very aggressive biter. And again, this was on August 15th. On August 19th, I communicated with the Bristol County Mosquito Control Project, and collectively, we discussed this issue. The Board of Health could not conveniently meet, but I spoke with all of you individually. And the consensus was, and I took the initiative on behalf of the board to just to explain to Mr. Andrews that I understood their concern, and also the issue that the Bristol County Mosquito Control Project had been exhausting its efforts, that we have an intensive ground spraying in this community. And again, I don't want to speak for that group, but any resident, any property owner within legal limits will have their property sprayed if they request it. And we do receive a lot of requests, and we do forward that on to the Bristol County Mosquito Control Project. So anyway, we spoke on, this was on August 9th, roughly around the date of August 19th, it was a few days before. And on August 19th, I sent an email on behalf of the Board of Health and selectmen members that the town fully supported and wanted aerial spraying to combat this deadly disease. In the meantime, we would continue to work with all other entities. It's my understanding, and I have the confirmation, that Mr. Andrews forwarded my email immediately that same day to the State Reclamation Mosquito Control Board, which is a division of the Department of Agricultural Resources, which is a division of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So on August 19th, it was requested. On August 24th, the town of Rehnham received word, official word, from the State Department of Public Health that Rehnham and its neighboring communities, sister communities, were now officially at a high risk for triple E. Due, and again, like I've stated back, and I don't want to reiterate, but we always operate that way, but it now was official on August 24th. On August 25th, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, again, they could not conveniently meet, we issued an alert. This was now the next day, on August 25th. And we made a recommendation that all activities were curtailed half an hour before dusk and half an hour after dawn, but it was now a mandate that all town-owned properties, that activity would have to cease during those times. And this again was on August 25th. On September 2nd, I received notification from the State Department of Public Health, the lab, that an 80-year-old Rehnham male resident had contracted the triple E. I think it was about that time that I spoke directly with the chairman of the Board of Health and notified him, and I think it was by that time it was already all over the news outlets. That night as well, along with speaking with our chairman, I spoke with Mr. Andrews at Bristol County Mosquito Control, Ms. Riley at the Bridgewater-Rehnham School District, and Elizabeth Francis at the Park and Recreation Department. And the reason for this discommunication was just to have everybody involved and have everybody on board that this meeting would be occurring tonight, and for people to just be prepared that there may be or may not be more restrictions placed within the town of Rehnham that were, you know, on top of what had already been in place. And I do have to say, it's been tremendous, really, really, a lot of camaraderie and a really tremendous good feedback from all of those individuals in support of this, of the Board of Health. As of this meeting right now, as of 7 o'clock tonight, this office, your Board of Health office, has not received confirmation of the death. Based on that, I noticed been mentioned already, there may be people here who may mention the individual's name, and that will be up to them. Until that happens, I would not speak of the individual until we have that confirmation. Typically, under HIPAA laws, the health department would not, I had this question presented to me by a few of the news outlets today, that due to HIPAA laws, the health department would not be able to state to the person the name or address, just their age and their sex and some generalities.
Thank you.
That sort of brings us to my question.
Thank you. Before I introduce Wayne Andrews, I just want to preface my remarks by saying that any frustrations this board expresses are not towards Wayne or the Bristol County Mosquito Control. I know there's been some confusion as to the layers of government here. Our frustration, and obviously, the board will have an opportunity to speak, have been directed towards the state. Wayne, we've worked together, and you've worked with my colleagues for a number of years, and we continue to deeply appreciate the support, guidance, and efforts on behalf of you and your department. And so at this time, if you want to add anything, please feel free. And I know Alan and you both are available for questions from the public or from the media, if they have any.
Well, I'd like to thank you, folks, for inviting me here tonight. I'm here mostly to answer questions, and I'm sure there's quite a few of them at this point, certainly can run from how the disease cycle. I don't make the decisions on aerial spraying, I make the decision on ground-based ULV. I can explain the law, how they get there, how they go, or anything certainly that this board would like to hear. Anybody that has questions should, you know, ask the board if they can ask them. But I'm sure there has to be questions. At this point, I don't know the name, and I don't officially know the address. I had some folks calling on Thursday to say that a member of their family with triple E, and could we spray in the area, which we've done. We did, completed again this morning, and we had done it a number of times this year. So officially, I don't know, but I'm probably like a lot of people, I have a pretty good idea of where we're talking about and such, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You must have questions.
Anybody from the public who would like to either address the board or ask any questions of our experts in the audience? Any of the media who'd like to address either of the specialists? Chris Walgren from the Globe.
What does it take to trigger aerial spraying?
Wayne?
Excellent question, because if I hadn't heard that question, that's where I was going to lead off. Aerial is interesting. I can make a decision on ULV, ultraviolet, and truck. Quite some time ago, at the beginning of all this, we were working at 100% capacity, 100% of the time, and working 100%. I have that choice. I do not have any choice on the aerial at all. There's a set of laws, and there's a number of them, there's child family protection, that the schools here have heard of, Priscilla handles mostly that. There's some priority habitats and endangered species laws from 2005. In order to put an aerial up, the Department of Public Health has to deem it necessary. It is solely their decision. The Department of Agricultural Resources pulls off the spray, and the governor needs to sign off on this, so they can go over no sprays, the priority habitats, and other areas, schools, and that takes a governor's signature. Not an easy thing to accomplish, considering there's people that want spraying and there's people that don't like spraying. There's a number of conditions in my ULV spraying I have to live by. I have to keep my tires technically on a named road. I can't go through the Hockamock like I used to down, down, and down a trail and spray. I can't cut through pine swamp anymore. And this is through a memorandum of understanding based upon that 2005 law. So a lot of people, you know, our hands are bound, so it's not easy to go up in the air. There's a criteria which they have to meet, you know, very specific things about the number of human biters, potential, you know, horses that have died and that type of thing. And I was talking to some people within the government today, and they said, "Well, you haven't had husk cases." And I said, "Well, in the Rehnham, eastern area, they're either vaccinated, and we don't have them anymore. So you're not going to have husk cases down here." And I never felt that was a great criteria, but it's one of the criteria anyways. You know, that's one of the more complicated, how do you get aircraft up in the air? We would like to. I'm a pro-spray person. If you ask me when we should have had them up, I'll say May 1st. You know, it's like other mosquito controls in the United States, but certainly, you know, I quickly looked at the chronology, I don't have a, you know, haven't looked at it closely, but I know we had a meeting, an hour-long meeting between the mosquito control people, us, on August 22nd. And at that point, yeah, there were some human, you know, biting mosquitoes, but not a lot, certainly not compared to last year. Well, on the 24th, a very long list came in, and we were all kind of yigads, it included my county, this county, Plymouth County, and all this is going on. And the question becomes, now what do we do? It's going to take a week and a half, two weeks. There's a number of criteria. You can't have temperatures under 60 degrees at night. We'll tolerate 58 on an aerial. You can't have heavy winds. You can't have rains. So if you had a week and a half, you're above to this time now. So it's difficult to pull off an aerial spray. I was the chairperson of this group that put the criteria together, so I know what it is. And this is based on scientific literature and that type of thing. It's difficult when it gets cold outside. It's difficult for our ULV machines to work. We try to set the limit on them at about 58 degrees. The mosquitoes aren't moving. It doesn't work as well against them, and there's a lot of reasons why not. 2010 was a totally different year. Things were three weeks earlier. So, and I happened to be in the state house on that day, so things speeded up a little. So we were able to get out very quickly by the 5th of August in aerial spraying. So you can see when you're here on the 24th, add a week and a half to it, you're in September, you've got weather like this. It's a difficult proposition to say, "We're going to spray." You know, difficult. I think, you know, I don't even think it's probable at this point. I mean, I'm on the record all over by saying that. But certainly, we have a tele, you know, a conversation tomorrow with DPH at 10 o'clock. I have no idea. There's not really an agenda, they don't tend to give us agendas. So that's where we are with that. Have I got any more questions? That's what I wanted to talk about the most.
Any other questions from the media?
I think they'll probably talk to me later downstairs. I mean, there must be, but that's it in a nutshell. We've retired. No? Okay, let's have it.
We started to talk about this, and if you would just address, just bring to perspective the concerns this year about what you're finding so far with your sampling. Because, you know, we do always hear about triple E, and, but when do we say, "We need to take some more proactive steps here," based on what you're finding?
Yeah, it's difficult this year. I mean, there's a number of sets of statistics that are out there. There's really only ever been one human case of triple E after Labor Day. And there's an outlier way into October. Does that mean it's going to happen this year? I don't know. We assume so. Certainly, our samples are not doing well. What's happened is we certainly had Rehnham, everybody's heard about the Bridgewater's, Middleborough, and those areas with the human biting mosquitoes. Well, last, the last set we did, happens to be the town I live in, Dyton went positive for a very aggressive, a different human biting mosquito. Well, you know what happens? This moves out of these areas. I mean, I like to say thank you to you folks over here for it, but that's not how it works. It spreads. And if you could stop it sooner, be more aggressive sooner, this is one of the arguments many of us had, in a smaller area, it doesn't have to be 300,000 acres, maybe you could do something with 20,000 acres early on in the season. Many of these are priority habitats, but certainly things that probably need to be discussed.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent?
Yeah, I was just wondering, why did you mention that? You couldn't officially talk about the victim? You weren't officially told about the local triple E victim? So why didn't you mention that? Does it affect the response to the triple E situation?
Well, wouldn't it be hard for me to find that neighborhood and do extra work in that area if the people hadn't called me a Thursday morning?
Right.
I got a call on it, and, you know, it's certainly the four items that are public, but it was, you know, after 3:30 when we closed on a Friday afternoon. Not so good. If they wanted us to spray, and it's obviously the family knew on Thursday. My guys leave at noon on Friday, they spray all night. In a three-day weekend, they're everywhere. You know, how can I pull people together if I hadn't sprayed or hadn't known the day before? We got lucky with the rain this morning, and were able to complete, you know, the areas up there this morning as well. I don't know how the rest of the week's going to be. It's going to be cold, and people are going to tend to be in. But the other thing I want to mention is, in our trapping programs, when it's cold outside, we don't catch many mosquitoes. So all of a sudden, people think, "Well, there's not much virus being isolated." Well, it's because we're not catching mosquitoes, they're still out there with a virus. They will not just disappear until a good hot breeze. When we can catch them, occasionally we get a periodic positive, but the vex, the Aedes vexans, which is a floodwater species in Dyton, will be around for quite a while. We are monitoring that. I got good trapping in over the weekend. We got fairly big-sized samples, and we delivered ours today, it'll be off Wednesday afternoon. So we got some pretty good samples. Remember, we got a western owl virus outbreak to south, to our north, and triple E to our western east. So we're continuing to work with various viruses.
So I guess, sir, are you saying that it's a problem that you're not being officially told who the victim is? Is it a problem for the response?
Fortunately, the family called.
Right. But I guess going on from here, future situations, what do you say?
I wish there was an official way. I've got the same frustration Alan has. It'd be nice to have been told. You know, in past years, I have gotten names and addresses, but it was a three-day weekend. You know, fortunately, I was able to respond because the family called me. I don't know if it's them or not. I assume somebody wouldn't make up a story like that. And we were able to respond, and we know the area, and we got, you know, we have GPS tracking spraying equipment, we know when we've been there, when we haven't, and that type of thing. But it certainly would be nice, nice to know a little more. But I understand those rules, and if they want me to do effective control, I got lucky, they called and such. And it was fortunate because we were able to do activities in that area, and making people feel better, and certainly reducing mosquito populations in that area.
So I guess, would it be safe to say you don't understand the sense of that rule?
Well, it's the rule, I understand the sense of protecting people, and fortunately, I guess maybe the family has to step forward and say, "Hey, we're over here, you know, could you help us?" And we did. I mean, it's just, seems to be somewhat archaic the way it happened, maybe because it's a three-day weekend, I don't know. But, you know, it was called, but, you know, well, you're in Rehnham, you know, it's not a big, big town, but guess what? If you're, you know, you're trying to go into one area in particular and hit all those back roads and stuff, you need to know a little bit more than that.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Chris?
Are we in some type of cycle there? What's the cycle of these mosquitoes? When can we expect it to land? It seems like we've been in for at least five years now.
It's an interesting thing. 2010 was very abnormal. Season was four or five weeks early. You know, some of the bridge vectors, some of the important ones were very early, and as a result, things changed. It tends to be in three-year cycles in a row. And it also tends to be about every 13 years. Well, everybody knows we sprayed in 2006. 2004, 2005, and 2006 were pretty good outbreak years. A lot of people got sick or died in those years before 2006. And that's really one of the bigger aerials we've had since 2009. Yeah, 1990, excuse me, 1990, and such. So what's going to happen next year? What I'm seeing right now, and some of, we use a different type of trap called the resting box, we're seeing huge numbers of culiseta melanura, that bird biter, that insuatic bird biter, huge numbers, I mean, massive numbers coming off now. And these are the ones that are going to lay eggs over winter. And we also all know how much water we have in our swamps now, particularly cedar swamps. I think we're building up for a fairly sizable population for next year. I suspect we'll have issues next year. It's be the third-year cycle, and that's what I'm thinking, that's what we're looking at. You know, there's various, you know, people that do this for a living who've talked about these kinds of things and such. So we're, you know, three-year cycle, people certainly need to talk about this more.
Thank you. Anything else for Wayne? In terms of the town's response, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues, just so the public, both here and at home, recognize, the town's response has, I believe, and I think the board shares my belief in this, as aggressive and as appropriate as possible. Mr. Perry, our health agent, has been constant contact with me and my colleagues throughout this holiday weekend, and prior to that, I've expressed before, and will continue to express, this is something that all of us knew was coming. We've dealt with it for the past five years, so it's not anything that's new to the town of Rehnham or new to our health office. I can tell the public today, I've spoke to the governor's office, the commissioner of the Department of Public Health twice today, as well as Speaker Pro Tem Pat Haddad and Senator Pacico, and expressed the concerns of the town of Rehnham for the lack of action, both in terms of communication and aerial spraying that the state has taken on. I share Superintendent Andrews' concerns of lack of communication. The town had not been communicated with by the state since Friday, and I deem that to be completely unacceptable, and I express that both to the governor's office, to our legislators, and to the commissioner himself today. I hope that they'll take seriously our comments, because moving forward, hopefully, we won't have to deal with another life lost. But if we do, the processes the state currently utilizes, I think, are subpar at best. In terms of the continued Rehnham response, I spoke to Superintendent Forbes today of the BR school district. They will be publicizing a notice on their website. Chairman Riley's here, if you want to elaborate further on it. I believe he'll also be sending home another notice with all students, so the students and parents are again reminded of any types of precautions they should be taking to hopefully prevent the spread of triple E. Parking rec has been curtailed, and I believe tonight we're going to be working to expand that curfew on afternoon activities. Outside of that, Ms. Riley, would you like to add anything in terms of the school?
Oh, Mr. Pacico, that we have put information on the website for our parents. We've sent home notices. We're also going to do an instant alert through our connect-in programs, in case those notices don't all meet, make it to the parents' attention. And certainly, we'll support and abide by, you know, whatever the Board of Health recommends, and that'll be for the full district, because mosquitoes don't know the difference between Bridgewater and Rehnham. But it will mean going through, you know, rental property, if we've had any activities that we've approved, or any athletic activities, some of those may have to be curtailed, rescheduled or whatever, which is obviously an inconvenience, but obviously, you know, public safety is most important. It's just unfortunate that we couldn't have been more, not this board, that the state could have been more proactive, and we wouldn't have to be reactive at this point. But we'll do what we have to do, and thank, obviously, the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen for their actions.
Thank you, Pam. To the board, Mr. McKenney, any comments or questions?
Just that Wayne, you know, we were going through this for so many years now. It's interesting, they said 1938 began, I think 1938, 1938, it got a name. But haven't we in the past attempted to spray early? You said May, prior to the season of the development of the mosquito, whether the airborne, wasn't there a move at one time, several, because we've just about tried everything? And for some reason, rather, and I congratulate the chairman for getting a hold of the right people, because I didn't know whether it was the environmentalist, which is an issue, or the money. And the chairman states that, according to them, they don't have any money in the budget. They have to go to an emergency thing. So I think that's something we're going to move on tonight, before the night is over, to get, try to get action on that. Should it be earlier, Wayne, that they, every year, they spray at around May, something like, would that be productive?
There's two kinds of spraying. There's larviciding, and then there's adulticide.
That's right.
There are two species of mosquitoes. There is no possible way, at least at this point, to get with a larvicide. One is culiseta melanura, it's in these cedar swamps, as I mentioned, deep in these creps. There's no way to get the chemicals to it. I could talk about some of the research when the U.S. Public Health Service was here in the 1960s, DDT, hepatochlordee, none of those things work, they're too deep in there. The second mosquito, which you hear me talk about, cochletidae peturbans, it's a cattail species. It is really the bridge vector to people, cattail species. It's another one that we can't get to with any larvicides. It attaches to the roots, deep down in the mud, to get oxygen, has a specially-adapted cypher tube, which is serrated, and that's how they get their oxygen. So the two main species, we don't know how to get to. Well, the other other choice is adulticides. You know, adulticides are getting better than they were back when we, you know, DDT. I could go through the outbreaks, 1938, 1955, and 56, probably 57, '73, '74, '75. 55, 56, and 57 was DDT. The outbreak in '73, '74 was malathion. 1990 was malathion. 2006 was synthetic, we decided to get into the synthetic pyrethroids, they're better. And this year, you know, was really almost a perfect operation with night vision goggles, and you could see at night. It's something we all talk about. We're running a research program at Bristol now, we presented our data at national meetings, where there's potentially some biological agents, bacterial-based, that culiseta melanura is sensitive to. You know, we're still talking to people about the ways of getting them out to some change in the materials and stuff. You know, it's a ways away. We're thinking about this, and we're not the only ones thinking about this. So, you know, you can larvicide and get rid of some of the nuisance species, but the two main ones, as you were mentioning earlier, it's another story, and we have to figure out, and we're not the only state with this problem. I mean, New York is, you know, already had a death from triple E in a young child. They'll be increasing, everybody knows New Hampshire's had problems. Back in 2006 and 2009, it made it all the way up into Canada. We don't know if it's getting warmer now, or what's happening with this virus. So it's changing. With that said, the Center for Disease Control has had its second meeting this past year in New Hampshire. Center for Disease Control has there for people in this area to receive additional training and present papers, so there's people looking at this upswing. Prior to 1955, over 75% of the triple E in North America originating in this area, as a result of aerial spraying by the state and mosquito control, such as Oz that was established in 1956, this has been greatly reduced to under 10%, but we still have too much in this region. And there's people looking at this.
Again, is it earlier, more productive, or does it, you wait for the sampling?
If I had my way, which I don't think they'd ever let me have my way.
Well, I'm interested in that.
Well, I don't know about that.
What you would do is, these are incubators, you know, the Hakamak, which includes pine swamp. This is an incubator area. And if they're away to kill, and this is what New York State does. They go out in early June, and they knock that population down. Guess what they didn't do this year? And wonder why there was a child with triple E that died in New York State. They didn't do it. They didn't go out this year. Ah, may have been money. There's been a personnel change. Some of the old, you know, guys have retired, and they're not probably there to remind people every day they're supposed to be doing this. And certainly earlier, maybe a smaller scale, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have to get together with the fish and game people because they control these. They have to give permits to DAR in order to take, that's kill things. It gets a little complicated. For us to do ditching in some areas, I have to sign off takes as a person. The regulations now are certainly not what they were earlier than five years ago and stopped. So early would be better.
June would be better.
Yeah, much better because then it wouldn't spread to Dyton. You know, we wouldn't have this expansion out from these incubators, and we know it's about four areas.
I pick on the pine swamp all the time, and if I lived near it, I would be a little upset at me doing that. Is that a correct location? Because the state will never tell us where they find the...
I think everybody knows it's pine swamp. There's one there, they're back in the Hakamak, and these sites are interesting. Back when the Public Health Service came here in nineteen fifty-five, that, we have the longest continuous trout locations that have ever been trapped. Nineteen fifty-three was the first isolation of triple E from a swamp. It was up here in Halifax, I mean, in eastern. And since then...
So that was the Hakamak?
That was the Hakamak. We call the pine swamp there Hakamak complex. It's not quite down there because it incubates a little bit different. You can look in different places. I mean, I love the way that people draw the line between eastern and Rainham. Are you kidding me? You know mosquitoes fly five, six, seven, eight miles with virus. And I'm trying to tell people, don't draw that line. You could be making a big mistake and such. But, you know, these are trap sites that have been trapped for, you know, sixty, seventy years.
And we know where it is.
Yeah, I think most people know. It's in there. So it's not the best of places to go when they're finding viruses. It's pretty buggy back in there.
Anyone calling you on dissolving the county recently, or are they not, are they being silent on that?
Oh, I'm not even going there at this meeting tonight.
Then where?
You can't drive me into this one.
It would be a good time to maybe send out some information to those people that are advocating it about how we seem to get the service from your county agency, but we don't get it from the Commonwealth of Mass, that's all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith?
Wayne, you mentioned that this is a three-year cycle. Now, this would be the first year of this three-year cycle?
Probably, remember, we sprayed last year. So there's day one. This year's two. And next year will probably be three. Some years it doesn't work like this. The nineteen fifty-five appeared to be like a two- or three-year cycle. I think it's more like that. I, looking at what we see in population buildup down in our Freaktown site, let's face it. Freaktown, you know, the mosquitoes and birds are moving everywhere. We're getting tremendous populations, staggering populations. I mean, resting box populations, if someone can get two per trap is pretty good. We're at two to three hundred nationally. People are going, how are you doing it? And I don't know, but we're getting them. And we can't, you know, we can't even count them all to get the numbers. We sent two hundred. And, you know, there's always positives. One week we had three west nile viruses and three triple Es and one west nile virus out of the two hundred mosquitoes. And we have those thrown away, but it's shaping up.
So it would behoove us, but my point being, it would behoove us to spray and spray for the next three years, four years?
Yeah, a lot of us have been, a lot of us have been saying that, but it's still going to be, it's still going to go.
It falls on deaf ears, and the chairman's has said that, so, you know.
There's, you know, it's constant discussions like this. And there's people, as much as you want, there's people that don't want it.
Right, right. Well, what price do you pay of people who don't want it? Are they afraid of what? A frog or a turtle or whatever?
Not even that. I mean, this latest spray, it wasn't in the water. We didn't kill non-targets, no honeybees killed. We're going out at night when the non-targets are out. You know, we're making it better and better. It's, you know, I don't believe it's the money. Last year was all appropriated. I got a supplemental budget when I went to the legislature and asked. I need some money or I'm not going to make it, you know, through last year's spray. Fortunately, I have a little bit left that I'll make it, you know, through this year without too many problems, I don't think, and such. But it's certainly a...
Well, we've also heard that it's not a high enough risk. What is the risk? What is the criteria that they use that it would be high enough?
There's a set of, it's here. I could read through it. And they're looking for veterinary animals getting sick. And you heard me mention earlier about, well, why no hussies? Well, that's really a simple thing down in Rainham and the Bridgewater's and the Middleborough's. I mean, you know, it's the unvaccinated hussies. I mean, I know maybe two husk cases since I've been, in ten years I've been a superintendent. Both hussies hadn't been vaccinated, as simple as that. Oh, they said they did, but you know, you look for the certificate or anything, they hadn't been. And, you know, hussies don't last long here. I mean, we've had other problems with, you know, in other veterinary animals. Certainly poultry-type that are sensitive to triple E being wiped out. Probably the two thousand six outbreak, and we were really surprised at what it did. But, you know, I say it all the time, Bristol and Plymouth County are fairly dangerous places. There's a lot of virus in these every single year. It's not them, it's us. You know, we, whose side of the border is it on this? Did somebody travel to Middleborough? Did somebody travel to Rainham? Well, how about Dyton this year where you don't expect it, where we're starting to pick up, you don't expect it over there. You know, people don't have the hussies vaccinated over there. You know, there's no pressure. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with that.
Now that it's going that far. I didn't realize a mosquito went that far. You said it's something like seven or eight miles?
Yeah, the, remember the bird biter, Culecida mellner I talked about? In a study, they set up, they dust them with a fluorescent dye, and they let them go. Well, they set traps out at about eight, nine miles, picked them up the next day. Eight, nine miles was the furthest ones away. Well, they made it to those. So if you don't think these mosquitoes are moving this virus around all over, this is no secret to people, you know, in the field. Or even, there's some really talented people up at the Department of Public Health in this field. There really are. I mean, you may not agree with them, but if we get together in the same room, maybe, or it's better than we're all standing in front of people.
Well, I think they all ought to come down to southeastern Massachusetts and stay for a while.
I've invited them down to Dyton recently to come down for barbecue.
Haven't come, huh?
No.
I wonder why. Well, I thank you so much. You are a great asset to Bristol County, I'll tell you that much. And thank you for all the work that you do.
I'm going to go back. I know we have a few new people in the public. If anybody would like to ask any questions. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name's Kimberly King. I'm a commissioner of the Plymouth County Mosquito Control Project. And I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit called X4 Disease Corp., which we founded in memory of my daughter Adriana because we lost her in two thousand and five due to triple E, which unfortunately, this past year has been the exact same repeat of that year. Although the Department of Public Health has improved greatly over the past six years, other state agencies have not improved. And they're more concerned about their political agendas rather than protecting the public. And I prepared a packet for you, for the selectmen to go and go over with Wayne after the meeting so I didn't take up a good two hours of your time this evening. Going on with all many of the problems in where you may want to address it. Unfortunately, many of our state agencies and our state commissioners have decided to cut our budgets and micromanage our agencies and fight with us rather than taking in what is in the best interest of our, in best interests of our general populace. And it's quite disheartening, especially as a mother and as a commissioner, to see this all going. And not only would it be a great support to Wayne, I know he's a wonderful superintendent here in Bristol, and I want to be where I am without him today, or educated. Because like yourselves, certain state agencies didn't want to educate me as a mother or deal with I either. Wayne was the only one to open the door as well as Priscilla, so I thank you as well, Wayne. Is it okay if I, you must be Debbie? You're welcome.
Thank you. In terms of, are you all set or?
Yep.
Thank you.
If I may for the minutes, Mr. Chairman, that would be made for the minutes that we are also the Board of Health besides the Board of Assessors, you're both masters.
Any other questions or comments from the public or media?
In terms of board action tonight, I think the two things that are on our radars, first, extending the curfew. And the second would be re-endorsing our support for aerial spraying. What's the board's pleasure in both of those measures?
Move to accept both of those measures wholeheartedly and get them out as soon as possible.
Second.
I'm in favor. Those are both approved. Are there any final questions on this topic, Mark?
What, can you explain the curfew that you just?
Yeah, we're going to be doing four o'clock, and it's just, again, for town sanctioned activities on town land. This, again, and I've said this time and time again, it does not stop people from having barbecues in their backyard or going to play catch with their children. And that's one of the concerns, I think, the board and I have, is that that's what aerial spraying can do. It can hit places ground spraying can't do, and it can have an effect that a curfew in terms of town activities cannot have.
So the curfew would start at four and then end at?
A half an hour after dawn. Is that how it works, Alan?
Currently, the ban is a half an hour after dawn. The, if the board would like, and I don't want to put the Bristol County Mosquito Control on the spot, but if they felt that that could be expanded based on the type of mosquito we're talking about, or if this mosquito was active past that, then I would recommend that you take that advice and then expand the...
To the board, are we?
Yes, with the recommendation that Alan go forward with it.
And what was the curfew before then?
It was a half an hour before dusk.
Yes.
Any other questions? Chris?
Just one for me to answer. I mean, a couple of the things you said were, number one, it's aerial spraying at this point probably isn't going to happen.
Chris, do you mind going to the podium? Well, just to both...
She's supposed to go first.
You guys can both go at once if you want. It's just for the viewers at home.
All right, first question, from what I understood that you said was that aerial spraying at this point probably won't happen due to conditions, just of its winds, rain, and lower temperatures that could affect that. And number two, there's never been a case of, except for one, you might have said it for anyone contracting it, human contracting it after Labor Day, so the odds are we're done?
Odds are we're done. I don't know if I would bet on it. You know, some years are different than other years. This year seems to be different. Indeed, it's the weather and meteorological situations that come up and makes the spray very ineffective. And if you're going to go out and spray, you want a successful spray. You don't want something that, you know, puts a chemical out, it doesn't do what you intended to do. People didn't feel they can go outside because you sprayed. And we're not catching the mosquitoes to give you any kind of numbers and that type of thing. So, you know, that's why we do that. And I worked on the group that did that work, trying to figure out, you know, how many cases there were after Labor Day. We went through historical, a lot of historical data. And indeed, it wasn't, you know, there was one case that we could find, you know, in October, you know, a random mosquito and such. And I think those two reasons is, you know, we're constantly being asked, both Priscilla and I, we go, we don't think so. I mean, it's hard enough to do it in a good year, never mind in a bad year. And that's kind of where we are, which means people have to remember to take precautions and, you know, and follow those, those five D's, which many of us can do off the top of our heads. You know, avoid dusk and dawn, dress appropriately, use a deep-type product, and dump containers around your yard. I mean, I can do that in my slate and stuff.
Final call. Chris?
Mr. Pacico, can you just clarify that, especially for the park recommendations, so that we can make notification of any uses of the...
Clarify the curfew?
Yes.
It will begin at 4:00 PM, and Alan and Wayne are going to collaborate and see what we're going to do for morning hours. But any town activities on town property from this point indefinitely will be suspended.
Town sponsored activities?
Town sponsored activities on town property from 4:00 PM indefinitely.
Nothing to do with the youth athletic organizations in town or uses, other uses of the property?
Any use of a town-owned property?
So that would include all the square meters?
Yes.
That's your answer. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jim, we'll also put an alert on our website, and we'll get the information out to the parking rec department and the BR school system.
Thank you. Mr. Luciana from the assessors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board of Assessors tonight. I'm speaking as a parent here in Rainham. And what I heard tonight, I wasn't going to speak because I am so proud of our Bristol County Mosquito Control, the various boards I've served over the years, the outstanding work from Wayne and Priscilla Mattinger here today. Cooperation from our town has been outstanding in trying to alleviate the danger of the triple E and west Nile brought to our community, communities, as we've heard tonight. And we're also hearing that it's past September first and chances are diminished. But we can't lose sight of what happened, what happened this year. Rainham lost one of our own. Pamented to me, someone who advised and counseled me for many years in the different positions that I held in this town, and someone who will be dearly missed. And I'm angry about that tonight because I think it could have been prevented. Could have been prevented if the state stepped up and did their job as requested by this Board of Health, as requested and recommended by public safety officials in this area who are versed in this tragedy. And they sat silent. This isn't the first year that we've had a death in Plymouth County and Bristol County. Is it going to take two, or three, or four more to die before the governor and the Department of Public Health step forward? And a nine-year-old in Middleburg, Johnny Fontaine, that died. And when God rest his soul, they sprayed that year. And it was automatically assumed that the planes would be up again the following year, and nothing happened. And was it a year later, another gentleman died? And now we've lost Monty Newfield. That may not have happened. The state had stepped forward and taken action and listened to the recommendation and the concerns of this area, southeastern Mass. Do you think if this happened in Milton, do you think they wouldn't have sprayed? I beg to differ to those that say they wouldn't. Southeastern Mass is an epicenter for this, and it's intolerable that we have not had a regular and yearly spray program, aerial spraying, that are done on a normal basis in how many northeastern states?
New York does quite a bit because they have, you know, cedar-type swamp, not the same cedars, but they certainly missed it this year, though. And they, in consequence, were...
And the consequences were a tragedy. So we cannot lose sight, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that just because we may be past the critical time period, that the state needs to answer for this inaction. The state needs to answer to Mr. Newfield's family as to why they'll be burying their loved one because of the inaction of our state officials. And I just want to, once again, clarify, that's the state officials. Because our county and local officials have done yeoman's work and to be commended because I believe they have saved lives with their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luciana. Any other final remarks on this topic? Commissioner?
I'm going to speak to you as a mother, so you know what's going on in the past six years and so that your constituents also know as well. And although I should have it memorized, I am going to read from a piece of paper to be able to control my emotions, if you don't mind. Without aggressive mosquito control in the United States, our serial killer mosquito will strike again. Existing mosquito-borne illnesses will become more of a gamble to public health. Emergent illnesses will become prevalent and stable, and our quality of life as we know it will be jeopardized. Mosquito-borne illnesses affect half of U.S. citizens each year. Mosquitoes also leave many of their victims with no quality of life. My daughter is one of those statistics. And today, I'll share her story last and begin with the families of survivors. In nineteen fifty-seven, a gentleman named David Bagman succumbed to triple E. He is still alive and confined to a wheelchair since his diagnosis of triple E and depends on others for his care. In two thousand and five, a twenty-year-old gentleman named Danny Francis was also stricken by the triple E virus. The cost and pain of the illness drove Danny to the use of drugs. His choice was heroin. He has no health insurance, no follow-up care, and very few to love and support him. Danny was left with brain damage and severe physical pain. Now, at twenty-eight, is confused and neglected, depressed young man. Ally Mae Holman was three months old when she succumbed to triple E. Her parents barely got to know her while she was healthy. Ally is now six years old and has made little improvement. Ally Mae's parents have been taking her to China for stem cell treatments and the last resort over the past three years due to the red tape in the United States and the lack of help in the state of Massachusetts. All Ally Mae's medical costs have gone, are over thirty-six million dollars. Diane Spades also contracted triple E in two thousand and five as her husband is not a huge supporter of mosquito control. Diane passed away four years after and spent her time in the rehab facility. Jim did work on the quality of life for his wife with infectious disease doctors at Mass General, experimenting with the treatments and educations used for AIDS and Parkinson's disease, only to rebuild her nervous system. In two thousand and six, Sheila Clark was victimized by the bite of another infected mosquito. Sheila remained in the nursing home dependent on twenty-four-hour care by an RN before her death in two thousand and ten. Sheila lost her job and her health insurance, and her home was in foreclosure. Colleen Phillips is an elderly woman who has a clinical case of triple E. Cheyenne Thornow was a bright and vibrant four-year-old, yet another clinical case of triple E. Ron Vagret, Derek Ashmont, Johnny Fontaine... Ron Vagret, Derek Ashmont, Johnny Fontaine, little boy Joyce, Kelly Lebel, all victims of triple E. CJ Cole, Nathan Gray, and Bob Venon, all survivors from New Hampshire, and now autistic thanks to the bite of an infected mosquito, along with the many from Rhode Island that were affected last year. The cost to all these families from the bite of a very real infected mosquito is well over $550 million, when in the 21st centuries, we have the tools to prevent needless deaths. And as many are aware, my precious five-year-old daughter Adriana succumbed to triple E in 2005. Her symptoms began on August 25th, as she developed a sudden high fever, complained of muscle aches, and said that her brain hurt. I rushed her to the social medical center in Noel for care, and mentioned that a local resident recently died from triple E, and asked that she be tested for this infection. We were told that Adriana had summer flu and that I was paranoid, and she was discharged. By the next day, Adriana lost her ability to walk, her voice softened, and she became dehydrated. Adriana suffered seizures in the afternoon and was rushed to social hospital in Waymouth. After two spinal taps, she was diagnosed and confirmed to be suffering from meningitis and transferred as an emergency patient to Children's Hospital. Once admitted to Children's Hospital, Adriana continued with bouts of high fever and seizures. On August 28th, Adriana fell into a coma as the result of the swelling around her brain. In the ICU, Adriana was hooked up to 18 different IVs and monitors. None of these measured cured or reversed this terrible illness. We tried to fight her fever by surrounding her with ice packs, and her seizures were temporarily lessened by the treatment with muscle relaxants and pain medications. Her breathing was helped by the use of a ventilator. By August 30th, the swelling of Adriana's brain had become critical, and her brainstem activity had become depressed. Doctors informed us that Adriana had just a 50/50 chance of survival, with severe brain damage and no quality of life. My sister-in-law miscarried shortly after the news, possibly due in part to the terrible stress of Adriana's illness. I began to question myself on how to explain all of this to Adriana's seven-year-old sister. Friends and family flocked to hospital in prayer and hope. By Labor Day, though her body was maintained on life support, my child was pronounced brain dead. On September 4th, 2005, at 10:39 PM, my precious and beautiful five-year-old daughter died in my arms as I held her saying my goodbyes. It was explained to me that an autopsy would be needed to confirm the cause of Adriana's illness. The autopsy results confirmed that she succumbed to triple E, and I donated Adriana's remains for future research. My daughter died as the result of the bite of an infected mosquito. September 11th, 2005, my daughter missed the yellow school bus. Instead, she was riding in the hearse to her final resting place. I buried my precious smilebug, my waterbug, the day we should have been enjoying her first day of kindergarten. The illness caused by mosquito-borne viruses have an overwhelming financial cost. Adriana's medical bills between hospitals exceeded over $180,000. The cost of day-to-day expenses for hospital stay for parents, voters, food, gas, to travel back and forth to families and siblings, mortgage, and other likewise bills became a burden to afford, as well as needing time from work to be with my dying daughter. Since then, I have stopped thinking about mosquitoes as mere annoyances, but rather as agents of death. Mosquito control provides for our community's public health, quality of life, and protects us from select bioterrorism agents. And without aggressive mosquito control, our serial killer mosquito will strike again, and the existing mosquito-borne illnesses will become a gamble to public health. And during the past six years since Adriana's passing, I have noted several serious problems that can and should be addressed. Our state agencies responsible for public environmental health must agree to begin to work together instead of ignoring and fighting with one another. The regulations and legislation must be revised to allow for and encourage cooperation between these agencies, and to allow mosquito control projects to perform their work without unnecessary delays, financial costs, and bureaucracy. From what I've learned, vital mistakes were made for the past six summers because of miscommunication and because some state officials listened more to those with a political agenda rather than those trying to protect public health. These actions were and are not in the best interest of protecting the general populace. Thank you. And I just want to say to the sports organizations, please heed the warning. Get repelled for the kids, get permission from the parents, and follow the town's rules here. It's very serious. Don't do what my county's doing, and take it to Joe. So kids are infected and they do die. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Mr. McKenna?
I, first of all, for the motion, and then I'd like to address a little bit about I think that it should behoove this board to start an effort to make sure that there is in the budget monies which has been made crystal clear as to what families have had to spend. I would venture to guess that the amount of money that has been mentioned just within the last five minutes would be well worth the state's while to box private citizens into this situation to come up with a budget item to spray. And I would say that the date of the spraying should be in June. I was in contact this afternoon with Dan Dermody. I don't know if people know Danny or not, but he's an official of football and has been for many years. Marty, I saw Marty officiate quite a tribute to him. His last football game, I think it was Pejota Rainham versus Randolph, and he officiated his last game last year. But Dan Dermody said he was going to email all officials, all football officials in the Commonwealth of Mass, and to ask them to contact their representative to see whether it can get action other than southeastern Mass, which I don't, you don't want to talk county, and I don't want to talk southeastern Mass. But so that it can be, the entire Commonwealth of Mass will be contacted by these football officials contacting their representatives, if we may. So I would like to speak just for a minute about Marty. And I think one of the things where the Commonwealth, and people I've talked to have called me and have said, I'm waiting for the state, and I guess that wait isn't going to be adhered to, so... But we do know Marty has passed. We do know that he is a victim of triple E. And Marty and Gene have been active in the community for many years, but I'll start off with someone who hasn't been active in the town of Rainham in over 10 years, maybe longer, named Paul Newfield. If people, townies, will remember Paul. And Paul and Marty, when I was teaching, I had a speaker program in Taunton High, and I would ask business people to come and talk about particular parts of Taunton and the industrial growth. And I said of Route 44, which is Taunton and Rainham, that I could invite 50 people, 60 people, to speak towards the Route 44 and its success, or I could get the same information by inviting Paul and Marty Newfield, because they were the individuals who you cannot have a checkpoint in 44, even to this day. That did not include those two brothers, as they worked diligently towards the success of Route 44, and therefore, success for the city of Taunton and success for the town of Rainham. So they've done that. So I'll leave it at that, to say that also, Marty has been active in an organization known as SCORE, which some people may know and some people may not. But SCORE is a group of retired elder business people who assist young people going into business. My son-in-law is one of them. Young business people going into business, and they together meet through the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce. They meet with these young individuals, and they give them information on how to be successful in business. And my son-in-law will tell you that certainly Marty Newfield was one of the key, if not the key, to the individual that he met. And in the middle of recession, he's doing very well, thank you for asking. And Marty was also a member of the planning board for many years, and I believe he was a member of the planning board in the city of Taunton also, before he moved up to the town of Rainham. So his experience in that led into the next, which is the Board of Appeals. And Marty's been on the Board of Appeals now for many years, and met on a regular basis. And then finally, for the Board of Selectmen, Marty has been our representative for many years with an organization called SERPIT, Southeastern Regional Planning and Development. And that is for the regional plan. I do this because sometimes people tend to look at the age and say, 80 years of age, had a full life. Marty had a full life probably 30 years ago, full life. That's not what we're talking about here, we talk about people like Marty. Because even though he was 80 years of age, what happens with elders is they can focus to a particular effort for a period of time and get things done. And Marty continues to do that. So I just wanted to be understood that the loss of an 80-year-old gentleman should not be washed away by virtue of saying, oh, he was 80 years old. He was 80 years young. And as a result, his efforts, and Rainham is a puzzle, which every community is, he and Gene and Paul, who's now in Florida, they're a missing piece of that puzzle now. The town of Rainham will never be the same without Marty. And so that's a definite loss, as the officials will tell you, and the football officials, even after he retired last year, he still attended their meeting and was a timekeeper. So that's it on Marty. If anybody wants to say anything on Marty, I'd welcome that, but nonetheless, that's the Marty that we have known over the period of years.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Any final comments? If not, we'll recess for two minutes, so the media and any guests who choose to leave can do so.
We'll get the cameras out in two minutes, Mr. Chairman.
I think so.
You've got the patience, you're the patience of a saint, this man.
Thank you.
Oh, my God, he's going to make it.
He's ready to go.
The Dunkin' Donuts is around the corner. No blankets.
That's all right, don't worry about it.
Thanks very much for coming, you guys. Appreciate it. Well, I had, I don't, yeah, Danny Dermody.
Mark, Dan Dermody's on the town planning board, so if you just call City Hall.
He may be chairman.
He is.
Chairman of the planning. And he's the one doing that, Mark.
We still want it now? I spoke to the commissioner twice, John Alomar, and the first conversation I had was that he said they did not have a budget, and so that was one of the reasons why they had not done aerial spraying yet. Once I heard that, I called the governor's office, I called Soby Pacheco and Pat Had at the Speaker of Port town. I notified all three of them of my unhappiness with that. The commissioner later called me back to clarify, to say why it wasn't budgeted. He felt that if he declared the need to spray, he would get the funds. He said to me that after they clearly called in, that if he declared the need to spray, he couldn't get the funds. And so we're back to the fact that they just don't think they should be spraying. Again, he did say at the beginning that they didn't have the funds for it, which is just unacceptable.
Because I know he was, but she was. So that's why they're doing it at St. Anne's Parish Center. They're going to be sitting shiva too? They're going to be sitting shiva for two nights? Oh, wow. I want to go.
No, I'm self-popping.
See if he found out from Jimmy, because that's what he was going to do.
I told Randy about the budget.
Did you find out?
Nine o'clock.
In the morning?
Nine o'clock in the morning.
Oh, wow. I'll see you at the church. No, I'll see you at the parish center.
Counselor, if you want to come up, we'll take you next.
At the parish center. Okay, nine o'clock.
All right.
Now, they're going to do that, and then they're going to sit shiva, which is Wednesday. Sit shivas for two nights.
Yes, for two nights, Wednesday and clear.
Are we all set?
That's what they do.
Alan, we're good to go again. Call the meeting back at 8:06. Counselor, I apologize for the delay. We have the public hearing tonight, which was supposed to be...
Excuse me, Randall, could you close that door? I think we're going to be getting feedbacks.
It's supposed to be at 7:10 PM. It's a public hearing on Applebee's New England LLC, Applewood, Applebee's Neighborhood Grill, and Bob William R. Andrews, manager for the transfer of an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license at 800 Route 44. All parties will be heard at this time, representing the request, Counselor. If you could identify yourself.
My name is Joe Devlin, I'm from the Demarcus Law Offices in Lynn, Massachusetts.
Okay. Do you want to speak, or?
Certainly, and certainly don't like to follow. Usually, you don't like to come in and see cameras in a crowd, but you don't like to follow that. That's especially the woman's story of putting my five-year-old on the bus in law, so it's kind of... But I'm here on a much more dry subject. It's a transfer of the Applebee's restaurant. All 29 of them are being transferred to Massachusetts, and all of them actually in New England are being transferred to Apple New England LLC, which is a part of Apple American Group, which is Applebee's largest franchisee. They have 270 other stores across the United States. They operate Applebee's franchises, so it's the same decor, it's the same signs, it's the same structure, it's the same employees, frankly. Probably mostly employees, unless they're watching on TV tonight, don't even know that this is happening. It's a $55 million deal for all the restaurants in New England, and this is just an outfit that's skilled at operating Applebee's on behalf of the current owner.
Sure.
It's been pre-approved by the ABCC, excuse me, pre-investigated and then pre-approved that it's in compliance with the Liquor Control Act, and they've got queries for all the individuals who were involved. What's this mean for the town of Rainham? Nobody will notice a difference. I think the manager is the same, the employees will be the same. If there are any changes, it's just going to be the normal course of business, sort of like a new executive group is coming in.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
What's the board's pleasure?
No. Everything is being in order, I would go to approve.
Second.
All in favor? It's approved.
I just need an actual separate vote on the pledge of license as well, because there is some bank financing.
Randy, is that back?
Approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's also approved.
Thank you. I'm very sorry to hear about it. It sounded like he was a friend of yours.
He was a friend.
Very, very touching on your part as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Department heads of committees chief, Donovan Chief.
As you know, I'm here tonight to respectfully request from the board to establish September 8th as Child Safety Awareness Day in the town of Rainham in memory of Mary Little Ruda. If you'd like, I can read from this lengthy statement, my letter here that kind of explains where we're coming from on this. The reason I'm here is with retirement Chief Pacheco, it occurred to me that not many officers are left on the police department that were here for this event. The only investigator left is Detective Sergeant Bonaparte, and there's only two officers that were also involved that day, Lieutenant Smith and Sergeant Hastings. So my fear would be that the police department of the town of Rainham might not remember this. People talk about remembering September 11th. In Rainham, we need to remember September 8th. And this letter, if you'd like me to read through it, Mr. Jim?
Sure.
"On September 8th, 1978, 15-year-old Mary Little Ruda of Rainham left a friend's house on her bicycle heading for home less than two miles away. She never made it home. Her bicycle was found on the side of a dirt section of roadway. A massive search and investigation ensued. The investigation was given nationwide attention." The investigation was given nationwide attention. Her body was found in the Freetown State Forest and was two months later tied to a tree. Her killer was identified and arrested for kidnapping and murder. Her killer was a violent convicted sex offender who had been released from the Bridgewater Prison. He had attempted to kill a 12-year-old girl in North Andover in 1968. He had attacked an elderly woman praying at her sister's grave. He had attempted to abduct a woman returning from PTA meeting. He was convicted for kidnapping and murder of Mary Lou Ruud in 1979. The conviction was overturned because hypnosis, a new forensic, to many police investigators were using at the time, tool, I'm sorry, was used to elicit possible information and clues not already provided by witnesses in the case. The killer was given a second trial and was convicted. The conviction was overturned. The third trial ended in mistrial and hung jury. The fourth trial, in which a former victim of his crimes testified, resulted in a third conviction. At the time, it was the longest, most expensive prosecution Massachusetts history. The economic and emotional toil on taxpayers, family, friends, witnesses, law enforcement, and citizens of the Commonwealth was enormous. Mary Lou Ruud and the circumstances of her kidnapping and murder had a profound effect on the Commonwealth. Law enforcement at the time would wait 24 hours before officially investigating a missing person. The Rainham Police Department, however, immediately launched a full-scale investigation, recovered crucial evidence, interviewed witnesses to events immediately, all of which was needed to survive four trials and eventually convict her killer once and for all. Missing women from other areas close to Rainham that disappeared under similar suspicious circumstances were never found. Those agencies had the 24-hour standard. Law enforcement agencies throughout the Commonwealth have changed the way they do business since that time. Hypnosis, once a promising forensic tool in law enforcement throughout the country, is no longer used or has very limited applications in investigations. Commonwealth versus James Kater is a benchmark case when hypnosis is used in law enforcement setting throughout the country. The Mary Lou Ruud case played no insignificant role in changing the collective awareness of citizens, authorities in Massachusetts, and exposing major flaws in the judicial system, treatment of sex offenders, dispelling myths about rehabilitation of sociopathic sexual predators, the reality magnitude of sex offender program problems, and practices of law enforcement agencies when dealing with missing persons. Children at the time, or now adults, recall that Mary Lou Ruud case changed the way they lived their lives and affected how they deal with the safety of their own children. The Commonwealth at the time was a place where sexual predators were treated as patients, released not questioning respect to past crimes even after admitting the same. After release, the anonymity allowed them to continue their predatory practices wherever they settled. Now we live in a Commonwealth that has sex offender registry, and our citizens and peace officers have a right to know who's living in their neighborhoods. We live in a Commonwealth where 24-hour standard was replaced by Amber Alert. Parents fingerprint their children, keep accurate records. Teachers, childcare professionals, the school department employees are much more aware of potential dangers. Police departments assign officers to schools. The standards for interviewing victims of sexual crimes have changed dramatically. There are victim witness assistants. Victims of crimes have a say in the outcome of the case and are allowed to be heard in a judicial setting. Many of these things were taken for granted today, were not in place in 1978. Citizens old enough to remember the Mary Lou Ruud case, remember the long ordeal her family has endured at the hands of the Commonwealth penal and judicial institutions, and the horror of a child being murdered by a repeat sexual predator unleashed on our citizens and children. They will never forget. The children at that time are much older. Most of the police officers, investigators have retired. Witnesses have passed away. It is important that our children and future generations remember what happened and why. The seed of the tree that branches out to protect our children, assist victims of crime, safeguard our citizens from dangerous and deadly people was planted on a beautiful young girl named Mary Lou Ruud who began to trek home on a beautiful Friday in September 1978. It is in the spirit that we are hoping to establish September 8th as Child Safety Awareness Day in memory of Mary Lou Ruud of Rainham, in honor and deference to all child victims of crime and their families.
Thank you. What's the Board's pleasure?
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? That's approved. Any comments?
Well, thank you very much. Chief, I think the history of this is a leading to the town of Rainham.
Yes.
Whereas there are some communities that do their best, but it doesn't work, and that's the way like this. There were some communities like Rainham that did their best, that reversed, did their best, took a postpone, and did their best. And so Rainham, I think, historically, should be, it should be so recorded that this is very significant, that you've taken this action, Chief, because it means that we are signifying that there is a need for this situation, which that you've applied to. And it was started by the tragic death of Mary Lou Ruud, who many of us knew her, the family, and Chief Pacico and Paul Jordan, very active in that research at that time. And so we thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think their persistence in keeping going back and doing and doing what they knew was right, I think that had a lot to do with it, too. And I always commended those guys at that time of doing it. I think this is a great thing that you've put together, and I understand you are going to have a little thing at the police station to make everybody aware of this situation.
Yes. In light of this, and like you say, my fear of the town maybe forgetting these events, I was able to get some training in Washington DC from the National Center of Missing and Exploding Children. They paid my travel expenses, there was no cost to the town. And with that, we were able to bring our policies up to speed with the rest of the country, and we won't forget within the Police Department. We are going to go over those policies on September 8th this year and every year as long as I'm chief, so that we don't forget those things. And be up to date as best we can. And also make public awareness, a lot of prevention. And the timing of this isn't just coincidental. September 8th, you know, in '78, we began school after Labor Day weekend. It was the first week of school. And for people like this offender, that's hunting season. And there's other people like him out there. So if we can raise public awareness that first week of school, get parents thinking about this, talk to their kids about it, we're going in the right direction. So that's another reason why I thought it was important to lock this date in with regards to Mary Lou.
Good. I commend you for doing a great job.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have one appointment tonight, the reappointment of Allison Johnson to
the Board of Appeals. The Board's pleasure?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Ms. Johnson, is there a point in new business, Mr. McKinnon?
Nothing.
Mrs. Smith?
Nothing.
All business, Mr. McKinnon? Towne Ministries Report, Mr. Buckner.
Capital Planning Committee met with a group of Department Heads last week, and we've got another meeting tomorrow night with a second group on their requests for capital items for FY12, which leads to the fall time meeting, which the Board agreed to hold earlier this year, and that's accelerated the timing all around. I've asked Department Heads to submit articles by September 12th, which is next Monday. I'll review them with Town Council that we can have a draft warrant ready for the September, Board's September 20th meeting. We met with the solar power company that won the bid to supply TMLP with a certain amount of solar power. They've been looking at areas within the TMLP service area for possible sites for a solar farm. They found a site in Rainham, and I've told them they should meet with Mr. Machado, first of all, because it's a residential, it's zone residential, I should say, and which they will do. And then with the assessors, because they're looking for some tax breaks. E-91 feasibility study, SERPIT is asking us and all of the communities involved to let them know whether we want to continue to participate in the regionalization of emergency dispatch services. And I think they'd like an answer by next week.
I think we had, I'm trying not to mix up one agency with another, but we did have a spokesperson and a committee in here talking about regionalizing, regionalizing.
Regionalizing.
It's easy for you to say.
I said it before, you don't.
The dispatchers, I got dispatchers.
Was it the same group?
Very good. Dispatches, same group. I don't know.
Yes.
If it is that same group, then I think we more or less decided at that time that this was something which was many light years away. I wouldn't favor that at all.
Definitely, no.
Okay.
You have to answer them, Randy?
Yes.
No? Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Whatever.
Upcoming Assembly meeting tomorrow, then SMHG is having a third scheduled meeting for regarding the Health Insurance Reform Act. Regulations were recently issued, and I think every municipality is trying to get their arms around it at this, right now. And last is negotiations coming up on September 21 with OPIU.
Thanks, Randy. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Buckner.
Selectment Report, Mr. McKinnon.
Just that I would recommend a letter go to the Taunton Municipal Lighting Plant. I know that there have been, human nature being what it is, there have been problems here and problems there and the day after the storm. So there may be a disagreement here, a little disagreement there. But I'm also very aware of what happened in the Commonwealth of Mass into sister communities, and how with the assistance of our park and rec, our highway department, sewer department, chipping, and everybody working together, but the power company, Taunton Municipal Lighting Plant being what it is, I think they really deserve a thank you, because basically we were up and running so much in advance of sister communities. In some cases, the sister communities still are having trouble as of this day, whereas with us, we're looking back. So I think they deserve a nod, thanks. By the way, also to our police, fire, and all the organizations, there should be something going out to our local organizations for the handling of that particular storm. But the TMLP, I always said of awards that should be given out, if you could find the name of the three or four guys that started the TMLP, I think Taunton deserves them or not, because they do get a few tax dollars from that. Thank you very much.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, and also remember to do it to Fire, Police, Highway.
Will do.
Second.
All in favor? It's approved. Anything else, Mr. McKinnon?
No, just are we clear that we should start the ball rolling to the Commonwealth of Mass for June of 12?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Let that get going. And I would recommend that it be to the representative and to the senator, and to the governor, and to just about anybody along with the county, thanking them for their work. I just think there should be communication to get this started now. If Danny Dermody is getting things going with the officials, then maybe we can get a grassroots, if you will, everybody loves that term.
I'll coordinate with Mr. Buckner on the logistics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
No, that's fine.
Mrs. Smith?
And I have nothing tonight. Correspondents, after a very somber evening, from the Commonwealth in regards to Tropical Storm Irene, it's an initial damage assessment report. Mr. Buckner, can we have this forwarded to Jim Janis, Chief Janis, please? I think he should be the one to fill it out. It's requesting the amount of damage we had as a result of the storm. From Raj Stolti, Chapter 90 project request for East Britannia. As a result of some reductions, again, in Chapter 90, we can't do all of Thrasher in East Britannia, which has been a priority of all of us, but he's asking to appropriate $60,000 for a portion of the road to be redone, which is East Britannia Street. He's, again, estimated it's about $60,000, and he thinks at this point it's the best way to do it is in chunks.
Well, I can't see doing, he can't do the whole thing. Does he feel as though the part that he does will hold up until he gets the part two? Then I'll move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? That's approved. From Liz Moore, Chairman, Council on Aging, she is writing to just let us know how pleased she is with the Police Department and the Fire Department and their overall departments for the efforts on behalf of the seniors of Rainham during the recent emergency caused by Tropical Storm Irene. Police and fire were given a list of names, addresses, and phone numbers of seniors in town who they considered could be risks in a severe storm emergency. The list was compiled by the COA, Council on Aging, and was sent to both chiefs prior to the storm. Both departments visited or called the seniors on the list to make sure they were safe during the storm. And I think, Mr. McKinnon, just goes again to the point that you were just making a few moments ago, and we thank Liz for beating us to the punch on that.
Yeah. This is from Dr. Lee Kozak, and I spoke to her over the weekend by email. She is requesting appointment to the Cultural Council in Rainham. She spoke to Judy Niles, who has suggested her for this position. Is Judy the chairman of that?
Yes.
So we have the chairman's approval. What's the Board's pleasure?
I'll move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Dr. Kozak has been appointed. Another request from the town of Rainham, it's for a three-year contract for sodium chloride to be used as ice control materials. Again, three-year for FY10, 11, 11, 12, and 12, 13, and it's recommended by Mr. Stolti to American Rock Salt in New York.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? That's approved. Two tag days, we have one from the Wildcat Softball, they'd like to request Friday, November 4th and 11th for canning. And that's it? Oh, and that's it?
I'll move to allow.
Second.
All in favor? That is approved, seeing no press time, seeing no community nor citizen input. Any emergency business?
Nothing, Mr. Chief.
Okay. I know we just have one executive session on contracts. What's the Board's pleasure?
Move to go to an executive session regarding contracts, no business to be conducted after, except to sign the deals.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned, we'll be back next week, as our schedule has ended. Thank you.
Summer schedule is over.